Welcome to the work session. Jeff, do you want to take it away or counsel? Do you have anything to start with? All right, Jeff, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. As I indicated, council members, this is the first of three work sessions serving as council orientation. Tonight, I'm going to do a little bit on the council rules of procedure and then the remainder of our time will be a general legal primer for elected officials. You have in front of me the material I'm going to work from. I prepared it like a PowerPoint, but I'm not going to use it as a PowerPoint. So I was telling several of you, I'm old and grumpy and think there are too many PowerPoints. So instead of all of us looking at a screen, I'll look at you and you can look at me and we'll talk about what I have to say. First, and we're going to, we're going to introduce the rules of procedure at this meeting and then our meeting on May 16th. We're going to mark it up. If any of you guys have changes you'd like to make to the rules of procedure, what I'm going to ask you to do is send them to me by next Friday. And then I'll agenda it and then we'll be able to talk about them at the May 16th meeting. These rules are your, sometimes I say council meetings are like all star wrestling. The only rules are the ones you all agree on. And it's not exactly like that, but it sometime in some respects it is. And so these are your rules. It's important that you agree on them. These, what you have in front of you are the rules approved by your predecessors. And I can tell you, your predecessors really went through these things when they went through this exercise. But that, you know, that, that doesn't matter. These need to be your rules. They need to reflect the way you guys want to do something. So what I'm going to highlight, I'm just going to flip through them very quickly, very quickly here at the beginning this evening, and I'm going to focus on two things. I'm going to highlight some sections for you to look at as you consider whether to recommend changes, just some stuff that I thought you might find interesting in that regard. And then there are several sections that bear upon the topics that we're going to talk about tonight. So I highlighted those as well. Like I said, your homework is to read through these rules of procedure carefully and recommend any amendments. Oh, and you don't have to recommend them and just conceptually, just say, I think we ought to have a provision that does acts, or I think this provision on page 12 is a mistake and it should provide more time, you know, whatever, whatever you want to do, but send it along to me, please. Okay, let's do the highlights real quickly here. If you go with the first page, it's page two. You'll notice in section two parliamentary authorities, this is one of the things that we are going to have to change. Your predecessors have dropped instead of Roberts Rules of Order, which is some 800 pages long and isn't necessarily really well suited for public bodies of this size. We have here in Colorado, something called Bob's Rules of Order. That were adopted by Bob Widener, a longtime municipal attorney and are much simpler and more straightforward. And your predecessors adopted those for use by this council. So one of the things I'll be doing between now and the next meeting is going through these rules of procedure myself and identifying where Bob, where Robert's Rules of Order is incorporated and where these rules need to be changed.
Can I just interrupt? I just want to let the council know that I've ordered books for besides Catherine and Kelly for the rest of the new council members. I've ordered a copy of Bob's Rules for each of you that should be here shortly. So you'll have them.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, continuing the, the real fast through the rules here. You'll, we're going to talk about the open meetings law later on tonight. If you look on page four of your rules of procedure, section four, meeting provisions right out of the chute, all council meetings shall comply with the Colorado Open Meetings Law. So you see it's incorporated right there into your rules of procedure. Under section four, item B on that same page seating arrangements. Now, this is a big deal. The last time we went through these rules, we had a lot of conversation about where everybody's going to sit. So you know, you need, read this carefully and make sure you're, you like where you sit. I, everybody tells me not to look for trouble. So I could, maybe that's what I'm doing. Well. Yeah, I don't want to be presumptuous and thinking this might not be an issue. Okay, move on to the next page.
I'm sorry to interrupt again. Well, you guys don't have your mics on Catherine. Turn your mic on. There you go. Thank you.
Hey, go over to page five, you'll see the voting where this is the, your rules when they address matters relating to voting. Just I, something I'd recommend paying close attention to. The second paragraph under little I is a recent change says, any matter upon which a tie vote is recorded, the matter shall fail. It used to be that on a tie vote, the matter was continued to the next council meeting. And when we had vacancies on the council, this resulted in stuff that never died. You had zombie back issues on, on the agenda. So this recent change, but I just wanted to inform you of that. Also note that the third paragraph under E little I talks about conflicts of interest, which is another thing we're going to talk about this evening. This talks about the, your duty as a member of council to declare a conflict when you have one, and that's an element of the disclosure and abstention role here that we'll talk about in a second. That rule is found in the Woodland Park Charter. Okay, let's see. Just flipping ahead, section five on page seven. Council meetings occurrence notice provision in minutes. Regular meetings start at 6:30. You like that? Would you rather it be six? I'm agnostic, but this has been a topic in the past. We used to start at seven. Now we start at 6:30. Gee Catherine, do you have an opinion? We'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Six thirty is fine.
Six thirty is fine. Okay, I'm not looking for trouble. I'm just highlights. All right, now go over to the next page. That's page eight. And you'll see here, these are a bunch of things that they mostly refer to state law executive sessions. That's an open meetings law topic we'll get to in a second. Public notice and other open meetings law topic we'll get to. Remember the rules already said that we follow the open meetings law. So then the minutes, this describes the contents of the minutes. Just notice in F there that of all the stuff that has to go in the minutes, only little V, Roman numeral five, has to do with substance. And what is the only thing the minutes need to include in terms of substance? Text of all main motions and their disposition. Full stop. This, you know, these, that's what's called action. It isn't Betty said this, Bob said that, and you better use the right adjective or preposition in the minutes. You don't need to meet that kind of standard. It has to and very you know, accurate, but it doesn't have to be Shakespeare. Reflect what happened at the meeting, which motions were made and what their disposition was. All the rest of this stuff is who was there and when was the meeting and so on and so forth. We'll talk about when minutes are required in a moment when we get to the, to the open meetings law. As I spotted something in section six, council meeting agenda and order of business. Just take a look at that in this, in your current rules, if you notice little Roman numeral nine ordinances on initial posting. Ordinances on initial posting are now considered on the consent calendar. So, and that's, that's reflected elsewhere in these rules, but we just, when we made the change, we didn't catch that. So that's a little, little thing we got to fix. Okay. If you go over to the top of page 10. See here, we got a whole bunch of procedural stuff that I have to look at between now and next meeting about which motions are debatable and which aren't, and what's the order of motions, so on and so forth. This is all what we'll be talking about at the next meeting, all the procedure stuff. But you, it would do to review what's in the rules of procedure already.
Sorry, Jeff, what, what page?
Excuse me, page 10. And these are, you know, the way it usually works is you've got Bob's rules and then whatever you guys want to do locally that deviates from Bob's rules, you can do that. You get to decide. But Bob's rules is the baseline. So let's see. Oh, and I talked to, if you look down under consent calendar, that's a good thing to read about, starting midway down page 10. You see in the second paragraph, ordinances on initial posting shall appear on the consent calendar. And then in the couple paragraphs down, any member of the council shall have the right to remove any item from the consent calendar. So check that out, read through it, make sure you understand it. Basically, you guys can take stuff off the consent calendar if you feel like it. They have a separate, separate vote on it. And if you like. On the next page, page 11. There, there are the council rules of procedure relating to public comment. Public comments always a lively feature of our meetings here at Woodland Park and it's good to know the rules. Notice the third paragraph down council, public comment won't be taken in connection with items designated on the council agenda as initial coding or first reading. The chair can make exceptions to that rule, but that's the general. Unfinished business or new business except with special permission of the residing officer. Next pair, couple paragraphs down, you guys can ask citizens for clarification during public comment, but it isn't an opportunity for a debate or a dialogue with the witnesses. Next page. Reports of mayor and council member, item G, the second paragraph. Mayor and council members shall not use this portion of the meeting to make political statements, respond to or refute actions. We haven't had this happening lately, but this has been a deal in the past here. You know, we have a heated debate during some issue and somebody wants to get the last word in, so they use the to be updated. The, you're not supposed to do that. Further down on the page. Very important thing, agenda preparation, common question, how do I get something on the agenda? How does that work? What is the procedure? Well, there it is. Section seven B. There is the procedures for how to get stuff on the agenda. Take a look at it. What do you think? Is that enough? Should we do something differently? Suzanne, I always want to hear from you too. If, if something's messed up. You know, from your point of view, and we need to change it, but you're never been shy about speaking up. So.
Thank you. I'll give my input as well when you know, when the time comes.
Okay, great. Awesome. Please note in connection with Suzanne's work and preparation of the agenda on the next page, page 13. Item D. For section 7D, regular meeting agendas shall be become finalized eight days before the regular meeting. So this just is something to internalize it. The city sort of runs in terms, in terms of what happens before you guys in terms of our staff council packet deadline. So the, with the city, everything's coming out of the departments. It's coming up to Aaron and Suzanne. They're getting the packet ready for you guys and sending it out the week before. And so the, the packet deadline is the staff deadline for work coming up to council. So we lawyers are always busy with planning or whatever department it is to get stuff ready to go. So that, that's a little view for, and it lets you know where Suzanne is in her world coming up to these meetings. Further down on page 13, public requests for presentations and proclamations. We get requests from everybody you can imagine to want to present in front of the Woodland Park City Council. There are rules in terms of who can do this, how long they can speak. And what, what happens afterwards? No official action is taken. If, if somebody wants to come in here and make a presentation that includes a request for legislative action, your rules provide that that will be presented not under public comment, but under like, what is it? New business? Yeah, that's Roman numeral six down there. So check that out. Okay, some of the most interesting stuff in these rules of procedure is in section 10. Sort of commonly called additional items. Okay, well, additional items include what, some direction about using electronic devices and specific, it's mentioned a couple of times in here. Don't be using electronic devices to communicate amongst yourselves during meetings. I've seen. I've seen some core requests that are total nightmare involving that kind of stuff where council members are testing back and forth about how some presenter.
And people can see that.
Yeah, they see you're calling the presenter a ding dong or something, you know, because it's awful. You know, don't do it. Let's see, continuing with additional items, there's also some direction, you know, social media is a huge deal in our world now. And Nina will be talking to you on June 6th, I think, about quasi judicial where you guys behave as judges, serve in a judicial function and you have to be impartial under the due process clause. We'll talk about this a little bit later on tonight. And one of the ways people get members of public bodies such as you all get in trouble is stuff on social media. Natural enough. But you know, somebody's coming before us for a big land use approval of some controversial real estate development or something. And everybody in town is in an uproar about it. And it's natural enough that members of the local public body are on social media as well, saying what they think and or arguments are good, which arguments are bad. Unfortunately, in doing that, you're prejudging the merits of the issue and making yourself unable to participate as a judge in the quasi judicial matter. So it's, it's a trap. Well, you'll hear more about it. Let's see. Con, oh, conduct outside of meetings. This is over on page 17, item D. A lot of this is common sense, you know, when you're not speaking to a meeting away from council, make it clear that you're just speaking for yourself, not for the council. But you know, sometimes that those issues come up. Conduct with city staff further down on the page, item E. This perhaps should have been part of my legal training for this evening, and I might just take a moment here to talk about it. This isn't just your rules of procedures. This is state law. It's also your charter. In a, in a council manager form of government. All the administrative staff at the city works for Aaron. And members of, of council are forbidden by law from interfering with his stack, working with his staff, communicating with his staff. It's, if you have a problem with the public works director, you go through it. Problem with somebody else. Now, if you have a problem with me, talk directly to me. I'm a council director report, just the Aaron. But, but the law is that that's called the non interference rule. And so a lot of the stuff that you see here under item E is reflected on the non interference rule. It's in state law. And we'll pipe up about that. Happily, that hasn't been a major issue in this city. That's just fantastic. I can't say that about all of our clients, but in Woodland Park, at least in recent history, it's, it's been pretty good. Okay, that's it. So again, go through this thing, see if anything, see sins of omission, since commission. Send me any amendments you wanted to talk about at our next meeting and I'll put them on the list and we'll talk about them. The other thing about we'll do at the next meeting is, like I said, go through Bob's rules of order. One of the nice things about city government is you don't need to know 50 million different, you know, procedural steps. It's mostly the same stuff over and over again. You need to know the order of voting on motions, you know, how to make motions. How to, how to raise points of order in some of these things that Bob's addresses and it's it's really a pleasure to have a resource that makes things a lot simpler in the procedural side of things. Okay.
Jeff, can I just?
Yes.
With regards to interactions with staff, if you have just a question or something that you want to ask of staff. That's typically all right. You can have conversation with staff. You just cannot give directions and direct them for doing tasks or things like that. That needs to go through Aaron, but if you just want to have a, a simple conversation or a simple question that of something you don't understand or clear, you might let Aaron know. But you can have conversation with staff. You just cannot give direction. Does that make sense?
Good to make sure Aaron's.
You bet.
One thing, when did you want feedback next Friday?
By next Friday. Thanks for reminding me. That's the 10.
And Jeff. Yes. I, I have kind of a little bit of a dilemma that I need to, I guess we need to discuss right now. So May 16 from six, we were going to do the council interviews for appointments. So I want to just ask council, what time they want the work session with you? Do they want it earlier or do they want it after council when possibly a new council member is appointed?
Probably after to me, because of that reason, it probably makes more sense.
Because Jeff, what time do you, how much time do you need for your work session?
I think that of course, I don't know how many suggested amendments to the rules of procedure we may have to discuss and how controversial those might be. But I don't imagine that the discussion of Bob's rules is going to take all that long. You know, I know which motions are the ones that are usually made. I know which ones are the kind of oddball ones, like a motion for reconsideration that comes up from time to time. But I bet I don't take more than half an hour on that stuff. So it's the question mark is how much time are the rules of procedure going to take? That could take the other half hour pretty easily, I think.
Well, if we go on history, it took longer than that the first time.
It did. Yeah. Last time, like, like I said, last council went through these rules of procedure and it was a fairly substantial session. I think we might've taken an hour or hour and a half.
I just know, and Aaron can attest to this, we have, we're going to have a full council meeting on the 16th. We have quite a few things on the agenda. And so for planning purposes, I just want to know where to put the work session. And because the appointments, we have the appointments to council as well. And so I just wanted some feedback because I start preparing the packet tomorrow.
I'm happy to come in with you guys, I mean, after, before, I don't, whatever.
Yeah, I don't want to feel rushed on either end, so I'd rather do them at the end. The work session at the end for the procedures at the end of council. But I don't, I mean, otherwise, I mean, otherwise we got to be here at four. And I don't know that that, you know.
Who can't be here for, just curious.
I'm flexible, so I can do whatever you want.
Well, yeah, I mean, in an interest of accommodating everyone, Catherine, if he can't be here at four, let's do it after.
I'll be zooming in, by the way, I'm in somewhere in DC or something like that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is can do the appointments prior to the council meeting and then the schedule the work session for immediately following the council meeting. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, this way I can prepare. Thank you.
Good deal. Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Now we're going to, I'm going to blaze through this legal primer. And if, if we if there's not, you know, I love to talk about this stuff, ask anybody. And so if I don't get to something tonight, just hit me up. You know, I'm always happy to answer questions and, and on that point, I prefer getting your questions not in open meetings. Because then I could be more forthright and ask follow up questions to get more about the facts. And I don't really like rendering legal advice with a whole bunch of people watching as a role, not because there's anything sneaky going on, but I don't always when I'm presented with a question in open meeting, I don't necessarily have all the facts, you know, and I like, you know, I don't like be a quick drama draw, you know, on that stuff. Okay, I mean, this, this first couple of slides there. There's statutory municipalities and home rural municipalities in Colorado. Woodland Park is a home rural municipality. Statutory municipalities get all their power and authority from the statutes. Counties are statutory jurisdictions, statutory towns, we represent some of them. They get all, they, if you want to do something to statutory town, you need to find the authority to do it in the statutes. Or in a statutory city, we have one of those we represent too. But for home rural cities, you don't need to look at the statutes. You have plenary constitutional grounds for your authority. You know, you can do anything you want absent a limitation on doing it elsewhere in law. So that's a very different kind of orientation. And why do they call it home rule? It's, it's rule here in Woodland Park instead of down in Denver under the dome. It's, it's home rule, meaning in the community. And we have a very aggressive form of home rule in Colorado where in matters of local and municipal concern like elections and sales tax. If there's something that we have in our ordinances that conflict with state law, our ordinance is control over the state law. Pretty amazing. You know, it's just incredible. But that's the way it is here in Colorado. And then in matters of mixed state and local concern as defined by the courts, we both get to legislate, but if there's a conflict, the state law wins. So I could, you know, you get a whole session on home rule, but that's, we, we're a home rural municipality, meaning our citizens have adopted a charter. And the charters like the constitution for the city of Woodland Park. Because our powers are plenary, the charter is often viewed as a document of limitation. It says you can't do this, you can't do that. Let's skip the, how do we exercise our authority, probably figure its ordinances, resolutions, proclamations and rules and regulations. I want to move right on to conflicts of interest because we've talked a little bit about that already. A lot of details in the conflict of interest statutes and in our charter. But here's what it really boils down to in terms of public policy. It's easier to remember the policy. The general public policy behind all the conflict of interest laws is you should not use your public position to feather your own nest financially. Or to confer benefits on your buddies. There, you know, that kind of thing. Do, most people with a basic moral compass understand the basis of this law? And if you think about the spirit of the law as well as its letter, 95% of the time, you're not going to have any problem. And if you feel like you're getting into the 5%, talk to me. Okay, first one I want to talk about here in the ethics and conflicts area is what's called the disclosure and abstention rule. You got it in your charter. It was just added to the charter here recently. It's section 3.14 C3. And it, you can see, this is a section, I've broken it up here for ease of reading. But it's if an officer or employee or member of their immediate family have a financial or personal interest. And these are defined in the charter. A financial interest is any interest equated with money or its equivalent. And a, a personal interest means any interest other than a financial interest. By reason of which an officer, employer, or member of the immediate family of such officer or employee would in the judgment of a reasonably prudent person, meaning it doesn't matter what you think. It's what a person, a reasonably prudent person would think. This is called an objective standard. Though it's not into your mind, but what a reasonable person would think, when a reasonable a reasonable prudent person would realize or experience some direct and substantial benefit or detriment different in kind from that experience by the general public. So if you're getting a better deal than the ordinary citizen, that should trigger something. Or if you, if you're concerned, and I'm just skipping a lot of words here, that your action, you're taking official action will have an appearance of impropriety. Then this, this law is triggered. And appearance of impropriety, this parallels a state law, but in this respect, it's broader than the state law. Your duties to recuse yourself are broader than those set forth in state law because of the Woodland Park Charter. So when you have a personal or financial interest in the matter pending, or if, or when you believe there would be an appearance of impropriety, if you voted, you will do the three things listed there. Disclose the interest whom, so there are other members of the panel. Don't vote and don't try and influence the remaining members panel on how they vote. That's the disclosure and abstention rule. The, I would recommend to you, and I'm, I attached it to a recent email, the entirety of section 3.14 of the charter. Which is the, includes all those definitions. Okay. So that's disclosure and abstention rule. I'm going to keep moving along here. Amendment 41 was added to the constitution of Colorado in 2006. It's a gift ban primarily. It says basically you don't get to get a lot of cool free stuff by being on the Woodland Park City Council. If you, if somebody tries to give you something that you're receiving because of your position on the city council and whatever they're trying to give you is worth about more than 60 bucks. You shouldn't take it. And this is a per donor per donee per year restriction. So if you've previously received $50 worth of stuff from donor A and donor A wants to give you another $50. Because you're going over 60 bucks, the next $10 you receive from this person. Talk to me if you think, if you have a situation like this. Amendment 41, which has this gift ban, also has a lot of exemptions in it, like campaign contributions and other sorts of things. Comp for attending conferences where you're a speaker. This and that. So lots of detail in this law. But just be aware if, you know, of, of receiving cool stuff because you're an elected official. Yes.
Question, Jeff. So Question Jeff, um, so as silly as this question might be, I just wanna make sure I understand. So if I'm like at a bar and someone says, hey, you know, congratulations for winning, let me buy you a beer. Does that fall under something like this?
Uh, don't let him buy you sixty-one dollars with the beer.
Answer my question, okay, yeah, six shots worth.
And then Jeff, what if they do buy you sixty-two dollars worth of beer, what, what, just report it to you?
Give them two bucks too.
You can certainly tell me about it. Because there's all this case law and interpretation about whether you're getting bought the beer. Really because you're on the city council, or maybe you're getting bought a beer, cause the guy's been a friend of yours. For a long time, you know, and, and, and a gift given by a friend even to congratulate you for. Attaining some official position might not be a violation of amendment forty-one.
Okay.
When we get into the weeds, which is why, you know, if you guys, if you think you're getting close to the line ends.
Okay.
I would think that if, if they make that specific word, council or councilman. That that should be a flag right there, rather than, hey Jeff, you know, congrats, but let me buy you a beer, it's been a while. There's no mention, uh, that, so. There would be a red flag, but if they say specifically, hey, congrats on, you know, being cheered in for. You know, council, like, you know, let me, uh, buy you a beer, you know, to celebrate.
Sure.
There's your difference.
Exactly right. Or if it's the lobbyist for somebody to give us an application with the city and he's not buying beer for anybody except council member.
That, that should be an obvious red flag, that something's not right, yeah.
You know. Yeah, if we didn't doubt ask me, that's what I'm here for, okay?
Excuse me, one other scenario I've run into before is, um, you're at the CML conference or some other kinda training. And the vendors all have little, put your card in for a drawing, and you actually win. I think back in the day, I, I won a Kindle and because of the law and stuff, I. I don't know, I probably gave away a Kindle, I didn't have to, but I, I did pass it on.
In the early days of amendment forty-one, there was a lot of, it's very badly written. And we didn't know what it, what it meant, and you know, these sorts of things were happening. Since then, it's been clarified that if you win a random drawing, you're winning the Kindle, not because you have any connection with Woodland Park. You're, it, it, you're, you're winning has nothing to do with your public position, so it's okay.
So I did give away a free Kindle.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you. And Jeff, one more thing, and so if you're comped tickets to something that's. They're worth more than, what'd you say, sixty dollars, then report it?
Yeah, I mean, talk to me, because the question is what, why, how, why is it you're getting comped? It's because you've known some people for years, but it's, if it's because you're on city council. There are even exceptions there. It, is it the city council at pro forma receives two tickets, they aren't for you specifically. They're, they're just, two tickets are given to council and you end up getting it this week. See, there's exceptions, then you're not the donie. The county, the city is, and you're not, so you're not receiving a direct benefit yourself because of being on council. I don't wanna say too much here, cause now I'm really down in the weeds on this stuff, but it's a reason to ask. Okay, um, public officials code of ethics, this is the third area of the law you need to know about. Uh, and I'll just spend a little bit of time here. This is particularly in this area, if you have a basic moral compass. You're not gonna run into the, these kinda problems, at least in my many years doing this, I haven't seen a lot of problems. Um, there's a rule in here about taking a gift. Uh, as what, what a reasonable person would view as a reward for some official action. Or alternatively, as an inducement to do something to depart from the faithful discharge of your duties like bribery. Or something that, that's against the rules, well duh, you know, you don't need this to tell you. Or how about, uh, the third one down? You can't have a business or financial relationship with somebody you inspect as part of your official duties, oh well. You didn't need the law to tell you that, if you do, have a more severe, come and see me right afterwards. Oh yeah, here's one of my faves, the fifth, the one about rule against accepting private benefit from government contractor. Member up in Adams County a few years ago, where they, all the county commissioners ended up getting nice new driveways. Uh, from the county's, uh, paving contractor. Um, that's how changes to the law are made, and that's how this section was added in response to the Adams County paving scandal. So don't get one of Aaron's contractors to do something around the house, okay?
That goes my new driveway.
Yeah, that's right, just don't, that's, but most of you would think of that, see, this is the thing. You know, this is why these things haven't trapped people, let's move on to the Open Records Act. The Open Records Act, I'm gonna talk about open records, then I'm gonna talk about open meetings. Uh, open records is the less important of the two, because the world of open records is, is. One that Suzanne and I live in, you know, somebody files an open records request and we process it. The policy behind the open records law is, these are the public's records, they reflect the record of us doing the public's business. And the public should be able to come and see these records and request copies of them if they want, and that's reflected in the law. The Open Records Act is, the scope of the law is. Primarily defined by critical definitions, and I've reproduced them here at the beginning of this section. A custodian can be anyone who holds a public record, basically, and what this means, what's significant, this is, uh, page five, I think. Excuse me, page four, page four at the top, Open Records Act. What's important is that you all are now custodians. And your emails and text messages on your phone that concern public business are now public records. And people can ask that you produce them. So be aware of that. Be careful what you say, be thoughtful about it. Suzanne, do, uh, they, they, the reason you, I think you've been encouraged to do public business using your public address. The reason for that is when we get cora requests, it really helps produce all the material really quickly, so. Pay attention to doing that, it really helps us out when we get cora requests. A public record is, is defined very broadly. It's all writings that are made, maintained or kept by a political subdivision of the state and. Which concern public business, so just because it's in your phone, doesn't mean somebody could get it under the Open Records Act. It has to do with public business. That's the, that's the critical element, this was, there was a case out of Adams County, Arapahoe County a few years ago. Where the county clerk was having a passionate affair with his election deputy and they were sending all these hot texts back and forth. And the Denver Post decided that would make good copy, and I'm sure it would have. But it went to court and the court said, no, you know, the duties of the Arapahoe County clerk are to run elections and. You know, do this sort of thing, not to tell his election deputy what he'd like to do. And so that isn't, that doesn't involve public business, and so it doesn't go out. So that you have to satisfy both of those elements, uh, and pub, and public records in the definition of writings. Includes any, basically writings in any form, including digital, that's the thing to remember. So text messages and emails and so on and so forth. Indeed lately, I just last week was having to deal with a open records request for, uh, social media activity, sheesh. Really complicated to produce. Uh, when somebody asks for an, going to the next slide here, when somebody asks for an open record. Um, Suzanne and I are on a very tight timeframe to produce the record. We have to produce these records within a reasonable time, quote unquote, and the law says that a reasonable time is three days, presumably. Okay, so you gotta get all the stuff out of all the departments, go through it and redact all the stuff that you can release. Cause the Open Records Act says that you shall release one species of records, but it says you shall not release. A whole other species of records, so you can get in trouble for not releasing stuff, and you can get in trouble for releasing the wrong stuff. So you have to be really, you have to really pay attention in those three days, and if we can't do it in three days, we can tell the applicant, we need another seven days. So you have ten days to, to do this, you guys don't have to worry about the administration, but I tell you all that. Because it always takes on sort of a fire drug quality. When you get an Open Records Act request, because you have that three-day string, okay? Anything you wanna add to that Suzanne?
Nope.
Okay, okay, um. The, the price of getting it wrong, one of the things that's really terrible, now, well, bad for us. Is if we, if somebody asks for open records and we don't, and don't put them out, and our mistake, we made a mistake. If we get sued, we pay their attorney's fees. Not only do we get a black eye in the local paper, we pay the attorney's fees for the other side, so with, with cora, it's really important to get it right. Now, moving along to the open meetings law. Okay. Much bigger deal for you guys, because your activities can result in violations of the open meetings law. Here's the policy behind the open meetings law. You're doing the public's business, the public should know when you're doing it, they should be able to come and see you doing it. And, uh, attend and, and see the records of it and through the open records law. Like the, the Open Records Act, the definitions in this law are really important. So what's a meeting, that's such, this, this law controls public meetings, meetings of public bodies. A meeting is any kind of gathering, discuss, convened to discuss public business. So there has to be this intention to discuss public business, it isn't just the requisite number of you getting together for a barbecue. Indeed, the law says, if it's a social gathering or a chance meeting, it isn't covered by the. Uh, and where the discussion of public business isn't the principal purpose, the open meetings law doesn't attend. Uh, doesn't apply, but if it is convened to discuss public business, the law does apply. And what is a local public body, well, you certainly qualify as a local public body. But the, but the thing to remember is it's not just the city council, it's the planning commission, the tree board and every other inferior. But most of the other inferior bodies in the city that have to worry about the open meetings law. The big requirements of the open meetings law are openness, notice and minutes. And then the final element in the open meetings law that is important is the authority for executive sessions. And let's go to the next slide. Open meetings, this is the so-called rule of three and four that I'm gonna tell you about. If you have three members of a local public body present at one time. And you're discussing public business, it's an open meeting, meaning access cannot be denied to someone if they wanna come in. If you have. If you have a meeting at which the adoption of proposed policy, resolution, rule or regulation or formal action occurs. Or in which a majority or quorum of the body is in attendance, or here's the big one. Or is expected to be in attendance. If a majority or quorum of the body is expected to be in attendance at a meeting, you have to have provided full and timely notice before the meeting. Twenty-four hours is understood as sort of the baseline. This is why, well, I don't, maybe I'll do it right now. We always are telling members of public bodies, when you're, when you get an email. Sent to all of you, never hit reply all. Cause if you hit reply all, what you've done is started a meeting concerning public business involving more than four of you, where there was no prior notice. Boom, instant open meetings law violation. Legislature helped us recently by ameliorating that exposure by saying, if what you're talking about is when to set up a meeting. You know, ministerial stuff, doesn't involve substance, a content of legislation locally, you could do that. Without violating the notice requirements, but don't be talking about anything of substance, that's, that's a violation. Okay. Go on to the next slide, please, minutes, as I said earlier, we do action minutes. We don't worry about whether people use the right adjective, it, it's just the motions and their disposition. Minutes are required at any meeting where formal action occurs or could occur. So we don't have to be taking minutes to know, cause there's no formal action that's gonna happen in a work session. No need for minutes, sometimes the weird exception is, I've had this question, whether you can go into executive session for a work session. Well, it's a, if the work session's a regular meeting, you can. But there are announcements that have to be made in the meeting before you go into executive session, and then you have to vote, well, that's formal action. So you better have been taking minutes if you wanna go into executive session from a work session. My job's to worry about that, blow the wisps, but, but if we haven't laid the predicate for it, but, uh, that's, that's the one little exception. Now let's talk about executive sessions, probably the most controversial part of the open meetings law, why? Because as I said, the policy behind the law is we're doing the public's business, and the public should see, be able to see us do it, and here we are. Discussing public business in secret. Well, the basis for the executive session law is that sometimes the public's interest. Is best served by something being discussed in private, not the politician's interest, the public's interest. And when you look at the open meetings law, executive sessions are only permitted for certain designated top sorts of things. And when you look at those, you see that, that that's the case, for example, one of the bases for. Executive sessions is to discuss the acquisition of real property by the body. Imagine if you had to discuss the acquisition of a parcel of property with the seller's attorney in, in the back of the room. Well, the result would be that the taxpayers who you represent would end up paying a lot more money for that real estate. So this is an example where discussing it in private, figuring out what your bottom line, what your negotiating position is and all of that. Though, that's another basis for executive sessions, figuring out your negotiating position, your litigation strategy, stuff like that. Where the, the taxpayers are entered, interests are best served by us discussing it. In private, there's a, there's a process, we use a script to go into executive sessions. You have to, you have to say what's, what statutory basis there is for the executive session. And make various other kinds of announcements when you go in. Then you have to tape the executive session, which is a record to prove. Where a judge can review the executive session record to see whether the body stayed on topic. And didn't make any decisions, because one of the critical aspects of an executive session is that it's for deliberation, not deciding. You're supposed to use it for talking about stuff and some, and. What really happens is sometimes you go around the room and you ask everybody what they think about something. It's, everybody can tell where, where, you know, where people are coming from. But there, there's a big difference between doing that and saying, let's see a show of hands. No, you do not take straw polls, so I won't mention some cities that recently got busted. For doing just that, so you don't, you don't do that, so it's for deliberation, um. Oh, Sterling, I can tell you this, cause it's a reported case, a few years ago Sterling went into executive session. And they didn't make all the announcements that you're supposed to make before you go in, and they, they got taken to court and the court said. It's not a real executive session, it was just an open meeting, so the entire tape got, went out. And you know, people were saying some kinda snarky stuff in the executive session, so it was a, a lesson learned the hard way. By all, that's when everybody started using scripts, is after that case. Okay, um, almost. Last slide. This is what Nina's gonna talk a lot about at the, your first meeting in June, she's gonna talk about quasi judicial. Uh, and land use, various kinds of land use decisions. Uh, city councils have two types of functions, the one you're almost, most familiar with is your legislative function. You know, passing a dog ordinance, you know, that dogs, dogs running all over town. Fort Morgan, the other, one of our clients, Fort Morgan, they want us to write a feral cat. Or, yeah, cause they got a feral cat problem. So we go all over and see what kinda cities have feral cat ordinance is, which kinda, what kinda policy implications there are, and then we draft up. A feral cat ordinance, and when council considers that, they can talk to the public and we have a lot of public input and everything, and. Then you all get to vote on it. And if somebody comes up and talks to you at the diner about the feral cat ordinance, that's fine, you can talk all you want to. That, it, it just legislative matters, that distinguishes them from quasi judicial matters. Quasi judicial, and, oh, legislation announces broad new policy directions, like regulating feral cats. Uh, that operate prospectively and usually jurisdictional. Quasi judicial matters do not announce new policy. They apply existing policy to a particular set of facts, like a particular land use applicant. And they apply existing standards to the, to the record. And the decision has to be made based on only what's in the record. And so there were these rules, and some of the rules are, and, and the due process clause of the constitution requires that. The members of the panel that are making a decision on a quasi judicial matter be impartial. That's the standard, you have to be impartial. And the way you get disqualified from being able to serve on the panel is when your impartiality. Is, is showing not to exist, or you believe you're not impartial. The three main ways it happens are indicated there on the slide. One is ex parte communications. And this is, you know, one of, some of the hardest advice we as attorneys give to. Council members, you've got this controversial land use application in town, like at Walmart or something. Where everybody in town is up in owners. They all want to talk to you about it. And when they come to talk to you, you have to say, hey, the lawyer told me. That I can't have ex parte communications outside of the hearing. With you because my decision has to be based only on the record. So when you tell somebody like that. Is you say, don't just talk to me, send a letter to all of us on council. So that we all have the benefit of your input, then everything's fine. Ex party means just you are getting the information. It's different from the other members of the panel. So avoid ex party communication. Avoid prejudgment or bias. This is the, this is the big headache for lawyers now in, in the social media. And because everybody's on, like my Walmart example. Maybe, you know, for five months before you got elected, the debate's been raging in the community. And you've been on social media saying how you think this is a great idea or bad idea, you know. You're, you appear to have prejudged the matter that is going to come before council for your decision. That can be a problem. And one of the reason it can be a problem is because the people who are the land use applicants are going to be searching. For, you know, if they don't get what they want, they want to be able to attack the, you know, that it didn't go their way. By saying that you all were biased and prejudiced before you made the decision. And to establish their case, they'll go back through the last five months of your social media activity to see what you had to say about. Whoever it is in town, it's, you know, so just be aware of that. Okay. Be smart about it.
Jeff, I have a question about that. What is the result, if somebody did do that? And they had five months worth of social media stuff. And they. The applicant was denied whatever they were trying to do. Then what would happen? Like, what would the applicant do?
Well, the applicant, if, if. If the person who had all, who was biased. Uh, did not recuse themselves for voting, design the party facts, right? Then the, then I believe the vote is voidable. They can say your decision was not legally. If they, if their project was denied.
Yeah.
They'd say you shouldn't have participated. We insist on another vote. We need to make our case again. You know, it's law and we were not given due process.
We. So ultimately they would go to court or?
They could, they could go to court and ask for a remedy, which would usually be come back to the city and make you do a do other.
Okay. I have another question.
Yeah.
On that though, and this probably is more, well, I think it's more to you, but it, it has to do with when I was on planning and, um. One of the things, so, so there are a number of things that are coming up before the council that I participated on in planning. And. I think, you know, it sounded, it sounds good at the time. The advice is to recuse. But. My, my question about that is, this was public information. Right? The meetings were public meetings. So why would I have to recuse myself? Anybody? Including all of these folks can see that.
Uh, I think the danger there is that you prejudged. Uh, you arrive and you're, you arrive to do your function.
Yeah.
Here and then in the courts, it's called de novo. You know, you're, you're starting over. You're, you're.
I, I get to vote twice.
Well, in, in, in your particular, we should talk. We should talk about you voting on matters where you already cast a vote.
Well, I haven't, I haven't. Yeah, I've refused myself. Uh, Karen gave me advice to do so.
Okay.
And I did, but I know there's more coming up too, right? I think we've got two more.
There's one more case with a twist and you're right, we should just chat afterwards.
Okay, it's a not uncommon thing where people who were on planning, oftentimes council members, you know, elected who were on planning commission. Happens all the time.
Yeah.
But there's that period of transition where they were working on stuff on planning.
Right.
And then it's appearing on the council agenda. You know, Karen's been all over it, so that's good.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll talk.
But that's helpful though.
Make sure we're legal. And then the final. The, uh, final way that your impartiality could be affected is something we've already talked about, so which is conflict of interest. You know, the example I give there is your spouse works at the Walmart. You know, I picked real obvious ones, uh, but, uh, these are also the sorts of things that. When we're, if your attorneys, when we're looking at this stuff in quasi judicial. We're looking at not giving our, our opposition, people who want to overturn your action, an angle. We're trying to protect the integrity of the council's decision. From a collateral attack based on somebody having a conflict and not disclosing. And somebody just hates, you know, somebody said a year ago. I just can't stand any more economic development in Woodland Park. You know, something like that, you know, they're going to get beat over the head with it. So, and there's all, I won't even get into it. There's lots of issues about. Well, what if you said something three years ago, but for the last two years you haven't said anything and now you're in council? Is there a point where it becomes stale? Where you're, you know, you, a bias you might once have had is no longer relevant. Or if you claim that you no longer have that bias, how, how? How helpful is that? You, you'll have, get to really air this stuff out with Nia. Uh, when she talks to you about it. Council, that's my, that's my primer. And I could include a whole bunch more topics like labor and. You know, municipal revenue streams and all kinds of other exciting things. Uh, but that's it through this time. Like I say, next time, send me your changes to the rules of procedure that you'd like to see. And, uh, next time we'll. We'll do rules of procedure and, and, uh, and Bob's rules. And try and do it fairly expeditiously. Suzanne, because we'll have had a, a big meeting and everybody will probably be ready to. Move right along. So I'll try and be mindful of that. Questions? It's beaten into.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much. We got some time.